All right, good evening ladies and gentlemen. At this time I would like to call into open session this meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees on November 15th, beginning at 7:09 PM. Thank you everyone for being here this evening. I would like to start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Ms. Walton in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pledge of Allegiance) To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated, and if you could also silence all cell phones and any electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you. And if you would also now join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. All right. We have a agenda item. This is under a presentation, Bless a Campus Recognition. Ms. Perdoo.
President Reich, Dr. Cavassos, members of the board. Tonight, we're here honored to recognize a group of individuals who were instrumental in a recognition program last May during Teacher Appreciation Week called Bless a Campus. Organized by Gara Hill and Bridget Meeks, this effort recognized staff at 26 campuses with brownies, drinks, pens, car air fresheners, and signs of appreciation. I'd like to turn it over to Gara Hill to share some additional information about the program.
Good evening.
Good evening, Dr. Reich, trustees, Leslie. Thank you guys so much for the recognitions for our efforts last spring in our inaugural AISD Bless a Campus program. As we all know, it truly takes a village to raise, educate, and support the children of AISD. When businesses, individuals, and the community invest in our schools, the whole community benefits. AISD Bless a Campus created a turnkey teacher appreciation program that allowed us to serve 26 elementary campuses, approximately 2,300 staff, teachers, and administrators, and in turn allowed us to increase the student experience of many, many students in AISD. And despite me being here alone tonight, it was actually a huge team effort. We absolutely couldn't have pulled this off without people like Bridget Meeks, a Pope Elementary PTA officer, who came up with the idea after a conversation with a neighbor who teaches at Patrick Elementary that has no organized PTA. And like Shelley Eldridge, a Duff Elementary PTA officer, who did her own fundraising to be able to provide each and every one of the staff with a Cincy Room air freshener. And like Mark Shelton, an avid AISD community partner and owner of CC's on Little Road, who fed our volunteers for free and led us set up headquarters at his place of business, not to mention the 3,000 brownies that his awesome staff prepared for us that week. And like the 70 financial backers, other community partners, and 30 volunteers that we gathered in about a 24-hour timeframe, who wanted to do their part in supporting the community. I'm convinced that people are inherently looking for ways to give back and be part of something bigger than themselves. And I'm grateful that we were able to provide an opportunity and framework that successfully allowed or successfully tackled this need in our district. We are currently working with the Arlington Council of PTAs to not only duplicate this program in 2019, but we have a deep desire to partner thriving PTAs with PTAs that are just starting so that the whole project can include mentoring as well. We'd love to see the funding underwritten by community partners and that our reach be able to grow with even more participation. Principal Myers at Patrick Elementary sent us the following note. "This just made my day. You have no idea how much this means. As a principal who just got to Arlington in a school without a strong PTA presence, this means the world. I'm humbled to be part of a community that takes such good care of not only their school, but surrounding schools as well. You blessed us greatly. May Arlington always be that community." Thank you.
Gara, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, thank you. Thank you for your heart. Thank you for your spirit. And I would say that to everybody else if they were here. This being the month of Thanksgiving, it's nice for us to be able to have this opportunity to give thanks back to you and your group for what you have done. Knowing how it began and how it quickly mushroomed, what do you think your sights are going forward?
So we, there's 50-something elementary schools, right?
Fifty-four?
So, we did 26, which was pretty good. We'd love to be able to serve our secondary campuses as well, so junior highs, high schools, and to make sure that no elementary school goes without. So, we really pulled the entire thing off in about 10 days. So, given some additional planning and some additional resources, and we've got people, I think, lined up to help, so.
Well, thank you. I'm excited to see how this continues to mushroom. And it's wonderful to know, to have individuals like you to champion a cause that everybody is just so anxious to be able to participate with and help our teachers, our students, our community. So, if you would stay there, Dr. Cavassos and I would like to come down, and we have something for you. So, you may have seen this if you watch board meetings on TV, but we have recognitions where we share some of our trustee bling with individuals. It's only things that we wear and that we give out. It's very special to us, and it's for those that are, have done something very special and deserve a recognition. So, I'd like to present you this pin, and you can wear it on all of your marathons. For those of you that don't know, she's an avid runner, her and her husband here, who's the proud camera person right now. And whatever you do with it, just know that it comes from a special place from us as a board as well. So, thank you.
Gara, this is for you as well, and thank you for your support of our schools and our students. And your demonstration of love goes a long way in their learning and their success and their environment and our schools. So, thank you, Gara, for your support.
Oh, do you have them? Okay, so you can distribute those. Okay, so we do have something for the others that you mentioned. Thank you to them as well. What a great heart our community has. Thank you, Happy Thanksgiving, and we're going to move on on our agenda to the next item, which is appointments. Consider the administrative appointments, Principal of Goodman Elementary, Assistant Principal of Arlington Collegiate High School, and some introductions. Dr. Cavassos.
I recommend we appoint the board, appoint the individuals discussed in closed session for Principal Goodman and AP for Arlington Collegiate.
Is there a motion?
President Reich, I move that we accept the administrative appointments.
Mr. Chapa?
And I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Hibbs, second by Mr. Chapa, to approve the appointments. Seeing no discussion, please vote. All right, all trustees voted in the affirmative. Dr. Cavassos, please.
Thank you, President Reich, and it's my pleasure to present to you the new Principal of Goodman Elementary, Ms. Stephanie Savala. Stephanie attended Texas Tech University for a Bachelor of Science in Early Childhood Education, Texas Tech for Master of Ed. in Ed. Leadership, most recently an Assistant Principal in Keller ISD, has been a Principal Intern in Dallas ISD, has taught Science and Uplift, and has taught Gifted and Talented K-3 also in Dallas ISD. So, Stephanie, congratulations and welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to start off by saying thank you to President Reich, Dr. Cavassos, members of the board, and also Dr. Jarko for giving, for presenting me with this incredible opportunity. I feel very blessed and honored to be standing in front of you here tonight. I'm ready to get started. I am proud to be part of Arlington ISD and this wonderful community. And lastly, I just wanted to thank two people that are here with me in this room tonight, two people that have loved me and cherished me and supported me through my entire career, so my parents, my mom and dad. Thank you so much for just giving me every opportunity that you could and loving me so much. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce the new Assistant Principal for Arlington Collegiate High School, Ms. Lizbeth Moore. Lizbeth attended the University of Texas at Arlington for a Bachelor of Arts in Interdisciplinary Studies, UT Arlington for Master of Arts in Ed. Leadership and Policy Studies with a dual-language emphasis. Most recently, the Assistant Principal at Jones Academy of Fine Arts and Dual Language, has taught 9th Grade Spanish in Richardson ISD, has taught 2nd and 3rd Grade Bilingual in Garland, also a 1st Grade teacher, and has been a bilingual paraprofessional in Grand Prairie in the past. Lizbeth, congratulations.
So, thank you, President Reich, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos, for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I stand before you all knowing that it is by God's grace, mercy, and love that I've made it this far. To him be the glory and honor. Now I'm shaking. So, I've been an administrator in Arlington ISD for three years, and this new role at Arlington Collegiate High School represents the next chapter in my career. And I'm so grateful to Principal Jeff Krieger, the staff at Arlington Collegiate High School that are here, and Dr. Jarko and Dr. Cavassos for entrusting me with this new role and the responsibilities that come with it. I wouldn't have been ready for this opportunity if it hadn't been for the time that I've gotten to spend the last three years as Assistant Principal of Jones Academy of Fine Arts and Dual Language. It has been an honor for me to work alongside the teachers and staff at Jones, and I'm especially grateful for the support and mentorship of Principal Katuzka Herador. A special thanks to my husband Greg Moore, who encouraged me and believed in me throughout this process. I love you. Thank you to everyone that's come out to support me. I appreciate you all, and my heart just overflows with gratitude. And what else can I say but that Arlington ISD is definitely the place where potential gets real. Thank you.
Next, we'd like to make some introductions of some directors in our district that we've hired in the recent past. They've already been working, they're doing an exceptional job, but we thought we'd continue the tradition of introducing them throughout the year. So, first, I'd like to introduce our new Director of Advanced Academics, Dr. Karen Zetsky. Dr. Zetsky attended UT, University of Dallas for her Bachelor of Arts in Literature and Economics, University of North Texas for her Master of Arts in English Literature, and University of North Texas in Denton for her Doctor of Philosophy in Curriculum and Instruction. Most recently, has been the Advanced Academics Coordinator in Irving ISD, has taught English 2 through 4, AP Language, AP Literature, and 12th Grade Dual Language, has taught English 1 through 4, has been an adjunct English instructor, and has been a social studies teacher as well. Dr. Zetsky, congratulations.
Thank you so much. Good evening, President Reich, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. I am delighted to be a part of the Arlington family. I feel it already in my short time here. I'm excited to support the opportunities for college readiness and life after Arlington ISD for the students that are going to become my family. I do have my husband and son here with me this evening, one of my four children, and every time I think of the children I serve, I think of my own family because that's how we are dedicated to giving the very best for them. I also have several members of my team here as well and appreciate their support and am delighted to talk with them on a daily basis about this wonderful work we're engaged in. Thank you so much.
Next, I'd like to introduce our Director of Career and Technical Education, Ms. Susan Patterson. Susan attended Texas Tech University for Bachelor of Science in Exercise and Sports Sciences, Lamar University for Master of Ed. in Administration. Most recently was our Coordinator of Career Tech, has been a Coordinator of Accountability Assessment and Federal Programs and Career Tech Program Specialist at the Education Service Center, has been a Dean of Students in Crowley ISD, and has been a Project Lead the Way Engineering Teacher in Mansfield ISD. Susan, congratulations.
Thank you. President Reich, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos, thank you so much for giving me this opportunity. You know, I wouldn't be here tonight if it wasn't for the support that is around me and engulfs me every day. And I'd like to thank Craig Wright for giving me this opportunity as coordinator and for recognizing in me some skills and helping me grow and develop those skills for this role. I'd also like to thank Dr. Horton. She recognized these skills and is helping me to develop and grow those in this new role that I'm excited to be a part of. And I wouldn't also, also I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for the support of two dynamic teams. The Career Tech, the best team in the district, the Career Tech Department, and also the staff, the wonderful staff at the CTC. You know, pretty powerful punch, those two teams together. And so, I look forward to the opportunity to support the students, the teachers, and administrators, and to extend the dynamic opportunities in CTE programs for this district. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce our new Director of Security, Mr. David Stevens. David attended East Texas State University for Bachelor of Business Administration, East Texas Police Academy, and the Arlington Police Academy. Most recently was a Lieutenant, patrolled Special Investigations and Covert Operations and Youth Services with the Arlington Police Department, has also been a Sergeant and an APD Academy Patrol Officer, and has been a Patrol Officer and Field Training Officer as well. David, congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Reich, Dr. Cavassos, members of the board, thank you very much for this opportunity. I appreciate the support you've given me in my previous assignment and allowing me to come over to join the team here with the district, so it's nice to stand on this side. I look forward to continuing our work that we've put into providing a safe environment for our staff, for our students, and for all of our visitors. So, thank you, and a special thank you to Mr. Hill for also the work that he's done with me over the years, and I look forward to continuing that with the district. Thank you very much.
Well, congratulations once again to each and every one of you. We're so happy that you're here in your roles. We shoot for the moon. Excellence is our minimum standard here. I think you all know that. That's why you're here tonight. So, looking forward to great things to come and sharing in some of the successes that you will certainly have as you continue this journey on your path to help our community and our students. So, I would like to ask, as is our custom, yes?
Can I ask Ms. Patterson a quick question? Ms. Patterson, did you say that was Craig Wright? I thought that was Santa Claus back there. Sorry. Maybe Spence could get a good shot of him.
I was hoping we'd discuss that over the break, but thank you, Mr. Hibbs. So, as is our custom, I would like, oh yes, now Craig, you're on TV, you're on the worldwide web, so smile. Or Santa, whichever you go by this time of year. If you would not mind following Mr. Cale out to the lobby for a quick reception where we can welcome you and greet you. If I could indulge the audience here in the chamber, if you would, wouldn't mind allowing us as a board to go first so that we can come back in and continue on with business. We will take a brief recess at 7:29, 7:30. We will come back at 7:45. Thank you. I'm going to call back into session, 7:47 PM, this meeting of the Board of Trustees. Next, next on our agenda is a public hearing. We do have a public hearing this evening, so this is on the Schools First State Financial Accountability Rating System. So, I will officially open our public hearing on Schools First State Finance, Financial Accountability Rating System. Dr. Cavassos, please.
Thank you, President Reich, and the Texas Education Agency has released its 2018 Financial Accountability Ratings for all Texas school districts. State law requires that each district hold a public hearing to discuss its ratings and to invite public comment on the rating. Tony Drollinger, Executive Director of Finance, will present a report on the Financial Accountability Rating. Following his report, we would invite public comment on the rating. Mr. Drollinger.
Very good. President Reich, board members, Dr. Cavassos, good evening. Let's see if we can get this going. And no. You got it on yours? Then we can probably go. Schools First is a Financial Accountability Rating System used by the Texas Education Agency to hold school districts accountable for the quality of their overall financial management practices. It is designed to encourage school districts to provide maximum allocation for direct instruction, and it highlights and discloses the quality of financial management decisions we make. If you'll look at the slide that has the Schools First and it's spelled out, Schools First, you'll see is an acronym. It stands for the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. This is the 16th year that ratings have been assigned under the Schools First system, and I'm pleased to let you know that for 2018, the Arlington Independent School District received the A or superior rating, again, which was the same rating we received last year. This is the highest rating awarded under the system, and actually, it's, the district has received the highest rating for all 16 years. As a bit of background, here we go. It was first authorized in 1999 by the legislature. That same body changed it in 2013. The changes for 2013 were to make the process more able to, excuse me, more able to detect future financial solvency, and it also directed the commissioner to evaluate the system every three years and to make changes where needed to make that system stronger. The 2018 worksheet contains 15 indicators, which is the same as 2017, thank you, and it's based on student, staff, and financial data from the most recently completed and As you can see on this slide, the rating system is based on letter grades A through F, and this chart also shows the point system required to receive those letter grades. Over time, those points, the scale has really collapsed, and the purpose of that is to make the system much more rigorous, and it's because the agency is trying to be able to tell when a school is in financial trouble before they fail. And that way, they know whether or not they have to step in and try to do something. And the Schools First Rating System is the only way TEA has to evaluate schools on their financial end, so that's the only system they have to try to do that. Key components of the Schools First System, we are required to issue a financial management report, which we have done. That report contains the Schools First evaluation for the current year. It also has to reflect the prior year's ratings for each indicator, and then it has to disclose certain transactions involving the board and the superintendent. The system also requires us to hold a public hearing, which we're doing this evening, and it, we had to advertise two times in the newspaper, two separate weeks, for this hearing, which we've done. And then finally, we have to make the financial management report available to the public, which is here this evening. There's copies available at the back of the room. It'll be on the website as of tomorrow. And then, of course, TEA also publishes the Schools First Ratings for all school districts. And at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and it would be appropriate to invite public comment.
All right, thank you, Mr. Drollinger. I don't see that we have any cards. Is that correct? All right. Before I close the public hearing, I would like to take this time to just say, wow, highest rating every year for the entire 16 years. That says something. That deserves a round of applause. Thank you for your team. Lots of effort goes into it. Thank you for keeping our district financially sound. Since we have no comment cards from the audience, the public hearing on Schools First State Financial Accountability Rating System is now closed. Thank you, Mr. Drollinger. Next, we come to the open forum for agenda items. We do have one card this evening. This is a routine part of the school board's agenda for regularly scheduled meetings. This segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to share their views with trustees on items that are on the agenda tonight. It is not intended to be a discussion or debate, and trustees will not reply to speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated, and personnel matters are not appropriate subjects for open forum. As I said, we have one card. When your name is called, please step to the podium. You'll have five minutes to speak. A lighted timer on the podium will assist you in pacing your presentation. A yellow light will illuminate when there's one minute left for you to complete your presentation. When the red light comes on and the buzzer sounds, please end your presentation. Our one speaker, Mr. Stephen Poole, please come on down. Subject is school calendar.
Good evening, Dr. Reich, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos. I mentioned the perfect calendar the last time I spoke here. Did we find the perfect calendar? I don't think one even exists. Yesterday, we met with our association's campus leaders, and of course, the school calendar was a hot topic of conversation. And right before the conversation began, a teacher grabbed me and said, you know what? I would have voted for option B, but there was a lot of unanswered questions. And through the course of the conversations with campus leaders, they actually came up with a lot of good questions about the calendar as presented, and I'm sure you're going to adopt tonight. The first, of course, it's always on every teacher's mind, is time. The first, of course, it's always on every teacher's mind, is time. They like the idea of adding time without students at the beginning of the school year. They just want to know how the time's going to be structured. By adding more time to the junior high, high school, and capturing time at the elementary, that's four days without students, two at the beginning of school. Their question is, will that time be for us to work in our classrooms as we see fit uninterrupted? So, that's, I think, an excellent question. The second is the October and March days. There's not a teacher, one that I've ever talked to, that says they need more professional development. So, they're wondering how that time will be structured, too. Is it for them to work and plan and work with their teams and plan, look at data, and develop ways forward? And the third that I always hear when we talk about adding time and extending the day is, will we be compensated for it? Now, I've heard the argument, they're professionals, they're not paid by the hour. Their salary covers their work hours. Well, that may be true, but just because you can doesn't mean you shouldn't. Teachers look at it, you're extending our workday every day for 10 minutes, which adds up to four days' worth of work. Will I be compensated for the time that you're asking of me? And one that was really on everyone's mind, too, is how do the hourly employees fit into option B? They're worried about the cafeteria workers and bus drivers who may have lost time because there's less days with students. And then the fifth one is, is this the last bite at the apple? Are we going to be talking about adding time every year? Two minutes here, five minutes here, 10 minutes here. So, they would like to know some stability looking forward, what the district calendar is going to look like. So, I wish you the best when you're trying to adopt that perfect calendar, but just wanted to share some thoughts from our campus leaders. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poole. All right, next, we move to action items on our agenda. The first one, letter A, consider the proposed boundary changes for Pope, Spear, Swift, and Webb Elementary impacted by the Wemish World Language Academy. Dr. Kavasos.
Thank you, President Rice. And this evening, we bring, for your consideration, the board's consideration, the proposed boundary changes as a result of Wemish World Language Academy. And there's been a lot of work that's gone into this, a lot of time. And we brought this to the board to go out to public hearings. Michael Hill has led that effort with the principals and the committee. So, I commend their work and their effort in this to answer all the questions and process all this time and time again. And so, they are now bringing forward their boundary recommendations. So, Mr. Hill.
Thank you, Dr. Kavasos, for that introduction to the process. And Dr. Rice and board, good afternoon, good evening. As we are here to talk about the boundary. And the objective, again, is to approve these boundaries, the new attended zones for the impacted schools as a result of the Wemish World Language Academy. This timeline started back in June when we made the announcement of the expansion at Wemish. And it's gone through where we are today, many different iterations of meetings and considerations. And so, we're here tonight to seek, to present the recommended boundary from the committee. Wanted to give a lot of thanks to the principals of the impacted campuses and their team that they pulled together. We had three or four meetings just about the options. And then we had five community forums. And those principals, for the most part, were at every one of those. So, I do want to thank them that are here for their commitment to that process. The process, again, consisted of central office administration and different departments, campus administrators, parents, and Templeton demographics as a resource for us as we went through that work. The committee considered enrollment trends, student safety, population balance, and building capacity as we went through that and landed on the recommendation that we've brought to the board. We looked at the current capacity of each school, which is listed under that school's name. In that left column, that's the current enrollment at those schools. That percentage to the second column and their, under current enrollment utilization, that's the utilization percentage of each campus right now. The extreme right-to columns show the new enrollment as well as the new utilization. And the green number on each slide shows the number of students that would increase at that campus when we dissolve Wemish students into the new boundaries. This document shows the draft zones that were sent out. And we presented to the board a couple of weeks ago, maybe a month or so ago. And this is the same option that was presented in each one of the community forums when we went through the process. Again, we had those five at each one of the impacted schools. The themes that came across, it was a lot of conversation, two-hour meetings, hour-and-a-half meetings at each one of these campuses. But the common theme in all of the meetings was very simple. Three areas, school student safety, and that's the walking to and from schools. Campus capacity, is there truly enough capacity at the schools to make sure that we're not overcrowding? And then just the grade span for the Wemish World Language Academy. And so, those themes were there. We were able to answer a lot of those questions. And the committee and the community had a lot of feedback on those. So, the recommendation is from the administrations that the board approved the new school boundary options as presented that impacts Pope, Spear, Swift, and Webb as a result of the Wemish World Language Academy, and that these boundaries be effective in August of 2019. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions about this process.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hill. Appreciate the information and the process and the work that the committee put into this. And all the different, the public, all the meetings that went into this. We do have some questions. Mrs. Mays? Oh, wait, you turned yourself. Let me fix it. Don't, no, don't touch anything. There you go. You're live?
It's red.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. I just have one very quick question. Under the processes for student safety, can you just give me a quick little summary of what was inclusive of that conversation?
So, it was considering school walk zones and students having the challenges of making sure that we work with the city to put crossing guards in areas where there may be students that need help crossing the street to and from school. Safe walk zones, basically. Yes, ma'am?
Oh, you already turned your mic off. Okay. That was all you had, then, Ms. Mays? All right. Ms. Walton?
Thank you, President Rice. Thank you. I think this is a wonderful plan with one very small exception. I know the committee worked very hard. This is not an easy thing to do. I have a couple of questions. How many attended each one of the meetings? How many parents?
It varied. I do have the attendance sheets of each parent.
I'm just dropping the other.
There were difference from 15 up until there was probably 30 to 40 at some because some of them had other events that were going on on the same day of the forum. And so, parents came early for the forum and then stayed for the event, so.
And there were four?
There were five, one at each school.
Five, that's right. Okay. So, maybe 120 parents altogether at all of the forums?
I would have to go back and get the exact number on the signing sheets.
Okay. And did anyone from the Parkside Townhomes attend?
I don't know where they lived. I didn't ask them for their address or anything when they showed up.
Okay. They didn't have to put their address when they signed in for the meeting or whatever, huh?
Just had a signing sheet.
Okay. I'm talking, the one small part that I'm having trouble with is the location. Could somebody put the map up there of the new area? Thank you. Next to the pink-purple, there's a small block that is bound by Interstate 30, Randall Mill Park, Fielder Road, and Randall Mill Road. Is there any way to point that out to everyone? Hi, pretty, okay, we're just a little bit further up. Whoever's running the, there you go. Okay. It's the very rectangular, small sliver, as I said, between the purple on the left and the blue on the right. And those two attended zones, the purple is Pope and the blue is Red. If you look at the little stars, that's where the two schools are. Again, there's no way to point that out, but Pope is down a little south of Randall Mill. Webb is over across near to Cooper's Almond. You can just barely see the little X on the very edge, on the very right edge of the screen. So, instead, yeah, there, you can see it. So, for this area of town, for lack of a better word, I'll call it the Randall Mill West of Fielder area. There are, our demographer said, around 48 students or potential students in that area.
Yes.
It is a very busy part of town. I live in this part of town. I live over near Pope. So, I travel this area quite frequently. I know, Dr. Rice, you live right across the street from this area. The majority of the students in this area, 60, 60%, 29 out of the 48, live in the very, very southwest corner. It's a town, it's called the Parkside Townhomes. And it's right next to Randall Mill Park, which is that big, open area without anything in it in the purple area. Those kids in that area, those 29 kids, are a whole lot closer to Pope than they are to Webb. These are kids in, they're called Townhomes, but they're apartments. They have, in the past, gone to Wemish, which was just a scoot down Randall Mill and then down Fielder a block to Wemish. So, now, these kids are going to be going almost two miles over to Webb. So, it's going to be quite a lifestyle change for these families. I know those kids have walked because I've seen them walking home down Randall Mill every day. Wemish had two crossing guards, one at Wright Street to get across Fielder, and then another one at Randall Mill to get across Randall Mill. Because those are very busy, four-lane streets. The other thing that adds to it is there are a lot of people traveling that route to get to 30 to go to work in the morning. There are also a lot of students going to Lamar High School on both Fielder going north and Randall Mill going north. The safety issue is why I am bringing this forward tonight. I drove it again today. To get across Fielder, there are two places where there are traffic lights. Where the kids, if they know how to work a traffic light, can get across the four lanes of Fielder. But when they get over to South Davis, unless they're walking along Randall Mill, there is no light where they can cross North Davis. That concerns me greatly. And I really wonder if the city of Arlington is going to put crossing guards at all of these places where all of these, you know, kids are going to be working. That keeps me up at night. The other problem is, some of these kids might be able to cross at Cochise because there's a light there. But when they get over to South Davis, there's no light. And across the street from between where they are and Webb Elementary, there is a very large funeral home and cemetery. I drove through there today. There are ways that they could get through the cemetery to out to Randall Mill and not have to walk Randall Mill quite so far. There's also a very large, you can't call it exactly a lake, but it's a lot bigger than a pond, water feature in the middle of more cemetery. And that just looked like an awful attractive nuisance to me for, you know, children who are six, between the ages of six and 11. That just seems like that would be quite an attractive hazard. So, not only do they have the hazards of the traffic going to work and going to Lamar High School along Randall Mill and Fielder, they also have to deal with how do they get through more cemetery? And the only, only way I could see for someone to walk that is to walk down Randall Mill. Which puts, there are sidewalks, but it puts them right there at Arlington Memorial Hospital and the emergency room and the emergency entrance to Arlington Memorial. It just seems to me that we are challenging these children's safety. We're challenging whether or not these families will keep their children in Arlington schools and not, you know, put them somewhere else. And for that reason, I would like to propose an amendment to this recommendation. And that would be that these children, again, remember, 60% of them are in the very, very southwest corner of that little box and are a whole lot closer to Pope Elementary than they are to Webb. I know that we're kind of blending imbalances to the different schools, but they're still not at capacity even if, you know, these 48, all 48 of them showed up at Pope, it still wouldn't be, like, it still wouldn't overmax the campus. And I will say something very nice about Pope Elementary. I spent all day there working the elections last Tuesday. And that is one of the most well-run schools I have ever seen. And those children are loved on from the time they walk in the door until they leave. So, I have no doubt that that faculty at Pope could handle whatever comes their way. And of course, we can pretty well project that not all 48 of these kids are going to, you know, move to Pope. Some of them may go back to Wemish, some of them may go somewhere else. Some of them will move, who knows? But again, to my amendment, that I hope someone will second, that we move that, this Randall Mill West of Fielder area to Pope and not to Webb.
So, to be clear, Ms. Walton, then, your motion is to accept the recommendations
Yes.
with this slight adjustment?
With this amendment.
All right, do I have a second? No second heard?
Well, you'd have to second it so we can discuss it.
Get a second if there's, all right. Second by Mr. Chapa, go ahead.
So, do we have a sense of whether or not the students that she's discussing, so, Ms. Walton, you're saying approximately 2/3 of the students who would be affected by this boundary change to go to Webb actually live in one tiny part, which is much closer to Pope?
Yes, sir, 60%, not quite 2/3, but 29 out of the 48.
And some of these students presumably are going to end back up at Wemish, correct, Mr. Hill?
They would be allowed to apply back to Wemish.
Do we know whether the students, those particular students would qualify for transportation to Webb?
I would have to confirm, but I don't believe that there is a bus zone to Webb. All of Webb currently is less than two miles.
Because I just, my Google Map, real quick here, I did Parkside Townhomes to Webb Elementary, and it came back right at 2.0 miles.
1.4.
Or 1.9 or whatever.
You got 1.4?
Depends on how you go, yeah.
I've got Randall Mill to Cooper Street, but, and it's 0.9 miles to Pope.
And may I add, the route to Pope is straight down Randall Mill to Oakwood, where there is a light. And they can cross Randall Mill there, where it's not near as busy as it is at Fielder. And then go a block up to Ravinia. And then they're in residential area all the way to Pope then, and off major streets.
Mr. Hill, is this particular area, was it a subject of discussion among the committee?
In the, it did not come up in the committee. And it did not come up in the meetings at the community forums as well.
Those are all my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Ms. Mays?
Thank you, President Rice. So, Hill, do we keep any data on the students who walk and/or their parents drop them off? I know for my boys, at the beginning of the year, they'd ask that and you'd fill out. Do we keep that data?
It may be something that's kept at the campus level. It may be something that's kept at the campus level, I could check.
But we really have no idea of how many of those students do literally walk versus who could be dropped off? Okay, and then in that student safety conversation that the committee had, was there discussion of the city providing crossing guards for these students to walk to Webb? Is that going to happen, and if so, where would those?
So the way that works is normally when we go through the boundary process, I will alert the city staff that's responsible for that. And they are on alert that we are having some boundary changes in this area. Once the boundary is approved, then I will present the new maps to them, and then they will make their adjustments on where they place the crossing guards in. And we'll have a lot of discussion with them during that process. That's a saying that we've done at the other, when we've done boundary changes in the past.
Okay, so we will have a say, but it will be the city's determination
That's correct.
whether or not to provide those crossing guards. Have we ever had issues in the past of requesting crossing guards at certain locations where the city did not provide for whatever reason they chose?
Not that I'm aware of it. Sometimes it takes a little, you know, because this, these are new boundaries, but they're generally pretty, pretty accommodating to, to meet those needs.
Okay, and so they're, they've already been put on alert?
Yes.
Now they're just waiting to see if we're going to approve, when you take the final plan and say, here's what we've approved?
That's, that's the way we've done it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mays. Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, Dr. Rice. Mr. Hill, thank you for this boundary change. It's always, they're never fun to do, and, you know, we never have a perfect calendar, we're never gonna have perfect boundaries. In all the years we've been doing this, when we first started working on fixing boundaries, we had some boundaries that, what I call didn't pass the eye test. When you look, does it look realistic? You know, you want to talk about not passing eye tests, talk about congressional boundaries and districts. Those are things that don't pass the eye test, right? Like, they don't make sense why one little thing loops up and covers another, and, and we've had some boundaries like that, right? We've had some boundaries we've had to tweak and fix and, and go through that. This is one that, that teeters. It makes sense, it passes the eye test, there's a defining line, there's a defining cut, so, you know, it, it cuts off pretty well. Let me ask Mr. Hill. When the, when we change these boundaries, will these schools all be closed to transfers?
We, we, what we've said is that they would have limited transfer capability. We don't want to close them because of the impact of the Wimbis World Language Academy. If we close them and a certain grade level applies to.
So we're gonna limit them, but we're not gonna, because in the past, we've closed them for maybe the first year. We're not planning to completely close them.
That's correct, and, and
Maybe a little more caution on our transfer numbers.
And only because this is a new school, World Language Academy, and so if the population begins to shift again, we don't want to prematurely close a school and they're under-enrolled.
And, and the worst thing that happened is somehow we get, I mean, worse, I say worse, that's not right, but over-enrolling can cause some issues for us, correct? And so taking into account these demographic numbers and where it is, and with that transfer, you know, listen, I, I don't think either of these are great areas. I want my kids walking. I have a big fight that the two miles are mark, are limit. I, I still think that's ridiculous, that's, that's what the state funds us on some of those. I think both of these are down Randall Mill. You know, I live and die by Google Maps. I use it all the time and ways even better, and it shows from Parkside Town Homes, when you're doing the walking, it's one point four miles to Webb at a twenty-eight minute walk. And to Pope from Parkside Town Homes, it's point nine miles in an eighteen-minute walk, so it's about ten minutes difference on those two walks. Yeah, yeah, those are, those are, those are Google Maps, so it's, it's what it is on Google Maps from that perspective. Mr. Hill, if we have extra buses or anything, is there consideration if there's bus needs to do there? We don't usually have extra buses, do we? I thought so. With open transfer policy and what happens in allowing those transfers, Ms. Walton, I appreciate your thought process on this, and I think it's commendable, but, but I will say, knowing that we have the transfer process, knowing that the demographer took numbers, calculated those numbers from where the walk is, knowing those two, I'm gonna support the map as we have drawn.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hogg. Mr. Hibbs?
Thank you, President Rush, and thank you, Mr. Hogg, a couple of your comments were the same things I was gonna mention. When, when it comes to boundary changes, there's, there's, it's kind of like Mr. Poole was saying about calendars. There's just no perfect one. They, there's, you know, there's always going to be that one little neighborhood or that one little area, and everybody will say, well, why didn't they go to the other one? And what happens is, is that not everyone has the benefit to see the complexity of the entirety of a boundary area. I mean, if you look at where Pope is, it has a very dense set of homes and, and houses that's around there, and there's, there's numbers that, that will be pulling through those. And, and even in, in a particular area that has been grown out or grown up as where Pope is, there's new families that are coming in and beginning to build that, and that's hard for a demographer to even pick up on. I know that my community was, was one that all my kids, the entirety of the neighborhood was the same age. I look around my neighborhood now, and we've got scores of young children, and you know, our area is going to reinvigorate a couple of elementary schools and would like to welcome kids again. When I look at this, the complexity of this is that you've got that big, long stretch with, with Webb there, and you've got the back playground area. And then you do have a funeral home that, that, that kind of stretches out the area, but there's not as many homes there. And as, as a result, if you're going to have these schools trying to be able to get them as closely and balanced as possible, it's going to be hard to be able to say, what about that one little corner? With this, because, and I, I don't want to repeat, but because we do have open transfer, because we, we have the uncertainty of, how many of these kids are gonna go back to Wimbis? How many of those kids are going to apply to go there? And we're just making the assumption that the majority of these children do walk, and, and that may not be the case. I'm gonna kind of rely on what you, the committee, and your work have, have been done. That's why we put these committees in place. And I'm not a demographer, so I, I have no clue, so I'm, I'm gonna go with the recommendation as presented by the district.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Ms. Walton?
Thank you, President Rush. I worry that because we don't know if parents of, you know, these twenty-nine kids were at any of these forums, that we have parents that don't even know these boundaries are being changed. I think that's a distinct possibility, especially, you know, this group at the, the Parkside Town Homes. And the, and I, the question is right. Why are these kids not going to the closer elementary school? And the answer is, well, they'll be, you know, the schools won't be in balance number-wise. Well, I understand numbers and not overcrowding, but even if these kids all went to Pope, it would still, Pope's would still be under ninety percent capacity. Is that correct? Eighty-nine percent, I believe, is what we figured last time.
I, I did look at that, and it would raise Pope's utilization, and it would significantly drop Webb's utilization.
Well, like I said, after seeing Pope in action last Tuesday, I have no doubt that they could handle every bit of this. How many of our schools in elementary schools have two crossing guards assigned for, for the schools, do we know?
I don't have that information. It's something I could work with the city.
I know it took Wimbis a lot of years to get that second one in place. The, the city is not real fond of employing more and more crossing guards, has been my experience. So again, I will just say, I would appreciate you voting for this amendment. I think it's a, a safety issue for these kids. They need to go to the closest neighborhood school that they can. This neighborhood is really part of the Randall Mill area. It is not part of the area to the east in any regard. And I worry about the traffic crossing both Fielder and North Davis at that, in the morning especially. With all the traffic going to I-30 and to Lamar High School, I, I see it as a serious safety concern. So I would urge my fellow board members to please vote for the amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. Mr. Chapa?
I, I will just want to take a minute to explain. I, I will actually support this amendment. I recall last year that the principal of Wimbis presented to us during their campus improvement plan that the high mobility rate of the students who attended the Wimbis cluster was very heavily walker-dependent, so much so that I can remember the principal discussing issues with attendance on days that it was raining. And so with that, and with the information from Ms. Walton, that a majority of the students for the particular area that we're looking at are coming from one particular townhome complex that is at least fifty percent closer to Pope than it is to Webb. I think that's the deciding factor for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Mrs. Mays?
Thank you, President Rush. So this was vetted through the committee. You said that this issue did not come up through the committee. Now that it's come up, and you having sit in those meetings with the committee, for this section that Mrs. Walton is talking about, what would be, besides drawing a new line on the map, what would be any cons to doing this?
I, again, I, I can't say that I could put quantitative or qualitative data to that right now. Just have to sit down and, and really look at, work with the demographer and making sure that we're not missing anything. He would, because that's, it's what we call a planning area, and so he would grab that entire planning area and move it. But what he would have to do now is to go in and carve that one piece out and move that over, and it would really break up a planning area. So I don't know what the impact of that is, but I could.
And so a planning area for a demographer would just be looking at the population or the percentage of the utilization of the school, or is there more to it than that?
The planning areas are in such, they're broken up in such a way that, that you don't have kids on one side of a street going to one school and kids on another side of a street going to another school. It's more of the backyards of an entire neighborhood.
Yeah.
And you, that, that's the way he grabs the planning areas and works with them, and so that's why I say I couldn't really speak to that until I work with the, with the demographer to get into more detail.
Okay, and so my next question may be answered by you and/or you, President Rush. If we were to have the demographer put together this change and send it out to us, how would that impact us needing to vote on it this evening?
Well, I
Because like you said, it's one thing to have an eye test, but
I, I, I think it's the district's desire to stay on schedule, that we, that, that's why it's an action item tonight, that we have to vote on it and confirm, conclude business tonight.
Okay, and then, Mrs. Walton, I, I know you didn't mean anything by it, and I agree with you, Pope is a wonderful school with people that are, they're willing to hug and welcome the students, as is Webb Elementary, so I, I know that there would be no difference there as far as the school accepting the students, so I just wanted to point that out. And then lastly, would you be able to, Mr. Hill, let us know and give us information for the city and the progress and/or status of them providing crossing guards?
Yes.
Okay. And for that area that Mrs. Walton is talking about, is there any targeted way, more targeted than I guess we've already done, because I know information has been put out in several media ways for the boundary changes, but that we can make sure that we've given notice to that group of individuals? Per Mrs. Walton's comment that maybe they do or do not know?
So the, the initial process included communication from each one of the campuses with this actual map on the back of a letter with the open forum dates on it, sent home by every teacher into every student backpack, was posted, I'm assuming, not assuming, I saw it on campus websites.
Yeah.
And the plan is, once this is approved, is to go through that same process of whatever boundary we approve, making those parents aware of it, and getting each child a hard copy, placing it on the website and communicating.
Right, and I, and I just have to say, I guess, Mrs. Walton, for the years that I've, I've been here in the district, I, I do feel comfortable that the district did make sure that they were putting out information. I mean, no matter what happens, we always get individuals, for whatever reasons, that may or may not get the information. Unfortunately, that just happens. But I'm sure that the district has done, taken their due diligence to make sure that everyone impacted in these areas have been made aware of the meetings that we had, the committees that we had, and so forth, so that's, that's my comment supporting.
Thank you, Mrs. Mays. Ms. Walton?
To your question, Ms. Mays, about, you said something about, you know, you tried to divide where there's not, you know, children right across the street going to a different school. Well, there's an apartment house directly across from, well, it's over just about a hundred feet, but in, that goes to Pope. I, I don't know the name of it. It goes back behind, you know, some of the stuff there. But there's an apartment house directly, pretty much directly across from the Parkdale apartments that go, will be going to Pope according to this map. So we have, and I'm sure those kids play, all play together in the, in the park, so, you know, we're kind of busting up the, the neighborhood crews.
And then the last comment. And then the last comment that I do want to make sure is, is also in my mind, the fiduciary duty that I think that we have to our community, and that's making sure that the schools are at a capacity that makes it efficient to still run the school. And with Webb being at eighty percent, I have that fear that they would probably drop within the seventies, even just moving that, those forty-six students, so those are just my comments, but thank you for your proposal.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Mays. So there's a, a motion for us to consider now for the staff recommendation with the exception of that one cutout area with those boundaries of I-30, Randall Mill and Fielder Road, that one section. Please vote. Your, your, that's the only, there was no amendment. Your motion was, except with that carve-out. So that's what we're voting on. That's correct. If you then we would call, I would call for another motion. Correct. Please vote.
This has the boundary with Relling?
Yes. Yes.
Are we all done? It's still just showing voted here, so I can't tell. I, I, well, I couldn't see it. There we go. Okay. Okay, there, there we go. So the motion fails. Five voted against, two in favor. So this is an action item. I would entertain a motion. Mr. Hibbs?
President Rush, I would, I would move that we accept the administration's recommendation of the yes.
The boundaries as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Hibbs, a second by Mr. Hogg, to accept district's recommendation of the boundaries as presented. Seeing no lights for further discussion, please vote. Motion carries six and the affirmative, one against. Thank you. We will now move to the second action item B, consider the approval of the fiscal year 2017-18 independent audit. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Rush. And this evening, we bring for your consideration the audit, 17-18 independent audit. This is a lengthy process that the district goes through every year, and I want to commend the staff led by Cindy Powler, CFO, on the exceptional work. So at this time, there's brief presentation about our independent audit.
Good evening. Thank you, President Rush, board members, Superintendent Cavassos. We have completed the audit, and we have the audit results for the fiscal year 2018, June 30th, 2018. Just a little background, the audit is a long process. We did start the audit in the springtime. We were out in the field for a couple of weeks. The district did close their books after June 30th, and that's about a two-month process for them to do that, complete all the reconciliations. From there, we did come back on site in September. This is the team members that were part of the audit. The first three members are new to the audit, fresh perspective. Laura Nelson, myself supervised the audit. Selena Saraseras is your engagement partner. She authorized the issuance of your report. And all our audits have a second reviewer by a partner. That engagement quality partner was Tom Peterson. So the purpose of the audit is to issue an opinion on the report. There are three types of opinions we could issue. An unmodified opinion, also considered a clean opinion. If we had found some issues, we would issue a modified opinion. And then if we were not able to gather enough audit evidence, we would have to issue a disclaimer. So how do we get to the unmodified opinion? We fill what we, we fill up what we call the assurance bucket, the audit assurance bucket. And that starts at the bottom, planning, risk assessment. There we conduct interviews with many departments, HR, payroll, purchasing, accounts payable. So we talk to many individuals. From there, we identify your key controls and we test those controls. After the end of the year, we come back and we complete substantive test of details with analytical procedures. So after we fill the assurance bucket, we are able to issue our opinion. We are issuing an unmodified opinion over your financial statements. It's also known as a clean opinion, highest level assurance we as auditors can provide that the financial statements are materially stated properly. We had no internal control findings or compliance findings. So congratulations to the district on that unmodified opinion. Since the district expands more than $750,000 of federal funds, you are required to have a single, a federal single audit. We did do a risk assessment based on the U.S. Office of Management and Budget, and we selected two funds, our major programs to audit. Those major programs were your Child Nutrition Program and the Carl D. Perkins Grant. We are issuing an unmodified opinion on each major federal program and no internal control findings related to each major program. So kudos once again. Congratulations to the district. So the district does issue two sets of financial statements. The first set of financial statements is what we call the government-wide financial statements. They are basically full accrual statements, similar to how a business would issue their statements. One of the things unusual to this year is we did implement, or the district did implement a new standard. Government Accounting Standards Board has issued Statement Number 75. The district did implement that. That is other post-employment benefits other than pension. We call that OPEB. It is related to the TRS care, health insurance for retirees. On this statement, it does reflect everything that is owed and owed, owed and owed, as I said, is full accrual. You did have total assets and deferred outflows totaling $1.3 billion. Your total liabilities and deferred inflows totaled $1.5 billion, resulting in a net deficit of $169 million. And that deficit was pretty much the result of bringing the OPEB onto the books, that OPEB liability. And then you can see the pension OPEB liability is at $128.9 million and $217.7 million, respectively. So a little bit more information on the OPEB benefits and the pension. This statement is, does apply to all governments. The district was required to implement, to comply with generally accepted accounting principles in order to attain the unmodified opinion. One of the reasons why the OPEB liability is so large, $128.9 million at 630-18, is because its funding ratio. It is funded at less than 1%, a 0.91 percentage, pretty much a pay-as-you-go plan. Whereas your pension plan, which has a liability of $128 million, almost about half of the OPEB pension, is funded at over 80%. So that's your TRS pension, well-funded plan. One of the good things about the OPEB and the pension liabilities is it does not, you do not have to budget current resources. So the general fund is not impacted, other than you will continue to pay your required contribution rates, and the district has always paid these. We feel like that liability, in order to be decreased, the legislature will have to adjust either employee employer rates, probably an increase, state contributions or reduction in plan, in plan benefits, and most likely a combination of all three. Some more notes on the pension and OPEB. The pension and OPEB liabilities reflected on the district's statements are a mathematical allocation of liabilities of the statewide cost-sharing plan. So very complex accounting statement that we had to implement, or the district had to implement this year. Also, the district's allocated portion is determined by dividing their contributions or your contributions by the total contributions of all participants and the state's contributions as well. These liabilities have always existed. Prior to Gatsby 68 and 75, 68 relates to the pension, there was no information available or appropriate to allocate these liabilities to the individual entities. These two liabilities are actually determined, and as you can see, as you will look at your report, it added 10-plus pages of disclosure to an already large report. So your second set of financial statements are based on the modified accrual basis of accounting, which is what you're doing with your general fund. And that modified accrual basis, similar to a cash basis, is what you use for your budgeting purposes. Here we show the general fund revenues. Total revenues of $518 million. Your largest revenue, the green area representing 50%, is your property taxes. Your next largest area in red is your state aid, between, which is at 40%, and between your property taxes and state aid, that's 90% of your general fund revenue. Here we have a slide on general fund expenditures. Your largest expenditure is the green area. 64% is instructional and related services as expected. All your other remaining functional areas are less than 10%. So here we have some general fund operating results. As you can see, your revenues exceeded your budgets by $9.9 million. Your actual expenditures were less than budgeted expenditures by 9.2, though the first two bullets indicate positive variances, which is very good for the district. Actual revenues were greater than actual expenditures for the general fund by $3.1 million. You also had a capital projects transfer of $700,000, resulting in $2.1 million increase in your general fund. Ending fund balance for fiscal year 18 totaled $201 million. Here's some summary of your debt service and food service funds. For your food service program, you may recall last year you recorded that as a enterprise fund. This year, the district changed that over to a governmental fund. No change in operations. It was just a accounting, accounting for it differently. So it's on the modified accrual basis versus the full accrual basis. Your fund balance increased by $900,000 for the food service, resulting in an ending fund balance of $14.1 million. Debt service fund saw a fund balance increase of $2.6 million and an ending fund balance of $30.4 million. That fund balance is needed as you do have a interest payment in August of $16 million. And your tax dollars do not come till approximately December. Here we go back to general fund, and we talk about the unassigned fund balance. These are the funds that the district can use for any purposes they desire. TEA has a recommended fund balance, the red area, of 30 days. That would ask for operating expenditures or budget of $42.3 million. The orange area represents the amount of operating expenditures the district has, which is 141 days. So that's greater than the 90 days that TEA would say would be optimal fund balance. So a very good positive unassigned fund balance at year-end. That's really all I really had. I just wanted to close and say that a thank you to Cindy Powell, Finance Department, Tony Drollinger, and Alice Hemrich. Without their assistance, we could not complete this audit in a timely manner. And I will take any questions at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. I think Ms. Mays is chair of our audit, board audit committee, probably has some words. But thank you for the presentation, very detailed and complex, and it's amazing to me how many, how many levels of complexity just seem to be getting added on year in and year out for this process. Ms. Mays?
Thank you, President Rush. Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. I love this kind of information. I love talking about auditing. Thank you very much for your presentation. I would like to say that Whitley Penn had an opportunity to come in and give some of their report to the audit committee. And we had an opportunity, first of all, thank you, Ms. Walton, thank you, Mrs. Fowler, who also served on the committee with me. So we had an opportunity to speak with them, and I would like to say that they had very good words to say about our staff and their cooperation. And I'm sure any entity that's ever been through an audit knows that it can be a very grueling event. So thank you very much to AIST's accounting staff. Thank you very much for being open to help provide the documentation that was being requested. I think we have enjoyed our relationship with Whitley Penn, and I just want to say thank you very much for the job that you've done and for working with our staff. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
This is an action item, so I would entertain a motion.
While I have the mic, I would like to make a motion that we approve the independent audit for fiscal year 2017-18.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mrs. Mays, second by Mr. Hibbs. Don't see any lights indicating discussion, so please vote. All trustees vote in the affirmative. We have an accepted fiscal year audit. Thank you, Mr. Hernandez and Whitley Penn, and Mrs. Powell, Mr. Drollinger, and all of the heavy lifting from our finance and accounting folks. I know it's a lot to gather this, so I just echo what Mrs. Mays had to say. Thank you very much. It's a good financial evening, right? Next, action item C, consider the 2018-19 campus performance objectives and district scorecard. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Rush. And this evening, we bring for your consideration the campus performance objectives and the district scorecard. If you recall, the board has already approved the district performance objectives, and so this now is the campus level. With the changes in accountability and the system, we're at this part of the process. I do want to thank all the staff for their work on the CIPs and their exceptional work. I know we have some principals here that are the role models for campus improvement plan that Dr. Wertz has invited, but I do want to thank the staff. It takes a team effort, really, to put these plans together, to make them meaningful, with the leadership from Stephen and Kevin Barlow and others. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Wertz.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. President Rice, members of the board, thank you for allowing me to visit with you tonight about the campus performance objectives and the district scorecard. I do want to start off by echoing what Dr. Cavassos said and extend our appreciation to each of the campus leaders. We've had a very long but very productive day today of learning in the professional development area, and I asked them if they would come tonight, since we are using their plans as models to share tonight. And so I just want to thank them. Claudia Morales Herrera from Carter. We have Andy Hagman visiting with us from Lamar. Fernando Benavides from Sam Houston. Randy Lizardo from Bowie. Nidia Zavard from Atherton. And then we have Susan Laird from Amos. So I just want to thank them all for coming and spending some time with us this evening, even though they're getting up very early tomorrow to greet kids for one more day before we go to break. So I thought I would start off by first explaining or talking a little about the intentionality at which we try to work to align the different plans that we are operating under. The district adopted a strategic plan, and that really designs or operationalizes the work that we're going to begin doing. And what we try to do when it comes to the district improvement plan and campus performance objectives or the campus improvement plans is to align those things so that when we're working, we're all doing the same thing instead of trying to operate around three plans. And so there's been a lot of effort this year to make sure that when we implemented the district improvement plan, performance objectives, that campus principals were trained and supported as they tried to align their campus plans to the district improvement plan. And the rationale behind that is while there is, needs to be consistent effort at the campus level to make sure they're addressing the individual needs that are each of their schools, we do operate as one system, not in silos. And so there's a need for district-wide instructional improvement areas that have to happen across the system, and then there's individualization that happens at each of the schools. The district scorecard is a highlight of some of those objectives. So while there are many things happening inside district improvement plan, action plans, and campus improvement plans, the district scorecard pulls out some of the high-leverage points that are then reported to you all over the course of the year. In the strategic plan, there are four main goals. One, that's around academic achievement. One, that's around college readiness, workforce readiness. And then we have a fourth goal that's around leadership, citizenship, and responsibility. In the district improvement plan, we have developed performance objectives that are connected to each of these four individual goals, and those four, and those performance objectives are then cascaded down to the campus level where then they draft their own individual goals that are connected to those. I thought I would just briefly outline what the overall process is that campuses go through when they're designing their campus improvement plans. The first piece that happens is Dr. Barlow's department, the Department of Research and Accountability, they provide training to the campus leadership and district leadership around the continuous improvement process and how to design and develop the campus improvement plan appropriately. Then there is follow-up support and feedback that's provided by the area superintendents to each of their respective areas. Principals then are working with their teams to conduct a comprehensive needs assessment, which allows them to get down to what they identify as root cause as to why some areas are improving and why some areas are not. Then they take their analysis to their site-based decision-making committee and collaboratively develop and refine their plans in alignment with the performance objectives that the board adopted in the district improvement plan. Then we're at the step today, once they develop their CIPs, you are proposed, or the campus improvement plans, individual performance objectives are then provided to you to review, which we, I think, gave access to on Monday, that will be proposed for approval this evening. And then finally, once they are voted on and there are any, if there are any revisions after that point that campuses want to make, then they will finally publish them once that happens. The important thing that I think I need to mention about campus improvement plans that are very similar to district improvement plans is that... that are very similar to district improvement plans is that they're a living document. So as you're moving through the year, when you go through your quarterly reviews, when you identify that something is not working, you adjust your sales, so to speak, and go a different direction. For things that are working, you can kind of charge ahead. But they are designed intentionally to be a living document. So what is published on Monday may not be the same thing that sits there in January. They're usually pretty sound that way, but sometimes some adjustments are along the way, and that is expected. So I thought I would highlight a few examples of the campus improvement plans that have been submitted for your review. And what I'll do tonight is I'll just focus on each of the goals, each of the four goals, and just highlight a couple of examples under each one for you to see with how they're designed. What I thought I would do first is just orient you a little bit to the document and to the major areas that I want to draw your attention to. There is the performance objective and the evaluation data sources. So what will be used to evaluate it summatively, whether progress was made. On the far left-hand side, you'll see a strategy description, which is the actions that the staff will take to work on improving or making efforts to move the needle that's connected to the performance objective. And then in the strategies, expect a result or impact. Those are the ways that the team will then measure their progress of implementation and the impact it's having on student outcomes. And that will take place during formative reviews in November, January, and March. And then there'll be a summative review that will be reported out in June. This is an example of a strategies, of strategies that are connected to Goal One. Specifically, that's around reading. And this is at Carter. And some of the examples that you'll see noted in the plan at Carter is about implementing specific strategies connected to data analysis and planning that take place in the professional learning community. They'll also be provided professional development on effective questioning techniques that integrate these techniques into their lesson planning process. At Lamar High School, we wanted to highlight an example around Goal Two, which is connected to special education, the percentage of students graduating who are coded in special education. Some of the strategies noted on this plan are connected to teachers and counselors and staff knowing how to directly identify students who are in need of special education services and ensure their coding is actually correct in connection to their instructional setting, ensuring that there's appropriate staff that are in place to meet those students' individual needs, and then participating in a study that we'll be conducting this year around inclusive practices and the supports that are being provided to teachers. And finally, provide after-school tutoring for students who need additional support in regaining lost credits during this redemption time. Sam Houston, for Goal Two, specifically around EL students' graduation rates, is going to be working to promote the ESL certification courses offered through the World Languages Department for teachers who are serving students who are ELs in their classrooms, giving them the support in terms of certification requirements so they can begin to adopt and then implement pedagogy in their classrooms that are designed to meet the needs of that group of students. The campus leadership is also, is also trained on a feedback protocol model, and they will implement a coaching rotations within targeted teachers groups at their school to support them in their practice. And then finally, grades 11 and 12 counselors will be completing ongoing transcript audits for EL students to make sure that any of the EL students who are, for some reason, off-track for graduation are identified early so support can be put in place so they're able to cross the finish line. At Bowie High School, the example we want to share with you this evening is connected to the percentage of students participating in a coherent sequence of courses for CTE. And their strategy is aligned to the district's work, which is about our work with teachers and counselors to provide information and support, retaining students who are already identified and on a coherent sequence to make sure that they are able to complete those courses and meet that goal. At Atherton Elementary, this goal is around Goal Four. These strategies are connected to Goal Four, around the discretionary DAP placements. One is to provide additional support through the RTI process. So that's response to intervention. Oftentimes, response to intervention is looked at from an academic lens. There's also a behavioral lens. And they'll be leveraging the RTI process to help students who exhibit behaviors that we would identify as falling in Tier Two and Three. And they'll discuss alternatives to suspension and corrective actions that will help students get back on track when it comes to their behavior. And then finally, implementing the PBIS strategies and supports that they'll learn through professional learning that's provided teachers to implement inside their classrooms. And the last but not least, at Amos Elementary, Goal Four, their performance objective is specifically around the same area of discretionary DAP, D A E P placements. Their goals were, are to attend professional development involving classroom management practices and then also implement learnings from these professional learnings to help reduce the number of incidents that are, discipline incidents that are occurring at their campuses. And those professional learnings will be offered by the campus behavior coordinators. Now, these are individual strategies. And I just gave you a very small snippet of some of the strategies that are in each of the plans. There's one for each of the schools, and they're connected to each of the performance objectives that are part of all of the goals. What you'll see in front of you right now is the District Scorecard, which highlights some of the high leverage goals or performance objectives that are part of the District Improvement Plan. And in the academic column, academic achievement column, we have a goal that the district achieve at least a B rating on the new state accountability system and that all campuses will reach a met standard rating at the state accountability standard. Also, the percentage of all A I S D LEP students graduating in the 2018 and 19 school year will increase from 74 to 77 percent. The percentage of all A I S D special education students graduating during this school year will increase from 73 to 80. And the percentage of A I S D students graduating during this school year that are complete in equivalent of six semester credit hours in dual-credit A P or I B will increase from 47 to 51. Under Leadership, Citizenship, and Responsibility, the three surveys are identified. In terms of increasing the mean, on the employee satisfaction survey, increase the mean from 3.09 to 3.16. For the District Services Survey, increase the mean from 3.38 to 3.45. On the parent satisfaction survey, increase that mean from 3.37 to 3.44. There's also some areas connected to the bond program, including implementing Phase Four and Five of the 2014 bond as it's programmed. And then analyze and recommend to the board actions, specific M and O, tax rate, and appropriate communication for potential tax ratification election and the appropriate funds generated by the TRE. And then finally, assess and recommend a prioritized capital needs through 2025 to support the district's strategic plan and recommendation potential of a potential bond package to find prioritized needs. And then finally, in workforce readiness, the percentage of A I S D students participating in the CTE coherent sequence of courses, increasing that from 38 to 39. And the percentage of A I S D students passing the related workforce exams on those tracks, increasing from 69 to 89. So the administration's recommendation that the board approve the campus improvement plans, performance objectives, and the district scorecard. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Dr. Wertz. Appreciate the presentation and the examples and the tremendous work that is done by you and the academic leaders at every single campus and the whole, all the teams that go into this. It's a lot of work. It's a great deal of attention, a true analytical approach of improving our achievement. So I really appreciate what you do. We do have some questions. First up is Ms. Walton.
Thank you, Dr. Raj. I just have a new term here that I would really appreciate it if you could explain it to me. Campus Behavior Coordinator. What, who, what, when, where?
This is from...
This is from Amos.
Amos. So we have, we have coordinators at the district level that work in the social-emotional learning department that provide professional learning to campuses around behavior. And so the teachers that are at Amos will have an opportunity to attend training from the behavior specialists that will, that the teachers will be able to implement into their classrooms.
Okay, so these are not people on the campus?
No, we do have behavior specialists in the district that we do send out to different areas. We're specifically talking about PD that will be offered at the district level that then teachers can implement in their classrooms.
Right, so it should have been, the professional learning will be done by the campus behavior coordinators rather than for them?
Yeah, well, they will attend district-related professional learning for campus behavior coordinators. So I think what they're also referring to is they have, they have groups on their campuses that are connected to PBIS. And so those groups will have an opportunity to also attend training.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for that explanation. I appreciate it, Dr. Wertz.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. I have a couple of, well, I will defer if somebody else has a question. Go ahead, Mr. Hogg.
Sorry, Dr. Raj. I wasn't checking who all was on the list. I thought there was multiple, so I was going to wait a second. Hey, Dr. Wertz, thank you for this. And we do, as a district, and as we attend trainings and see strategic plans around the country, and then in my corporate life, we do a really good job of aligning and making them to connect on those. Let me ask the question, because we really only target on the top level, which is what is a governing body we should be governing on. How does the district vertically align so people can see those? Are y'all using, and y'all do a really good job, I see the documents. Are y'all using internal systems? You using just the old basic documents and then tracking them yourselves manually? Are y'all using a system to help align across all levels?
When you say alignment, what do you mean specifically?
Where everyone can see all the way going up and one system to be able to make sure everything's entered together and they start automatically connecting together.
We've worked hard at that. It's not, it's not a simple, clean process because each of the individual plans are designed at each of their campuses. So what we've done is we've provided professional learning to the campuses by first articulating what the district improvement plan is and then specifically working with campuses on how to develop strategies that are going to impact the district goals and objectives and at the same time, meet their student needs in a way that's measurable. So what we've talked a lot about with campuses, and we've actually analyzed it and provided feedback to schools, which is of all the actions that schools take over the course of previous years, how many of those actions are actually resulting in impact in the classroom and how many aren't? And then helping the campus leadership start thinking about where are the levers that actually you pull that will actually improve classroom instruction and aligning those specific strategies to ones that we know we're going to do in the district. So what we do is we publish the district improvement plan with strategies in advance. As campus principals are working, they're able to see what strategies are going to be implemented at the district level and then lean into those. The other thing that they can also do is add additional strategies that are at their campus that address their individual needs, because every campus has those. So I'll give you a quick example. One of our strategies around reading is to develop or to implement our balanced literacy framework. So we have training specifically at the elementary level around guided reading. If that happens to be a challenge at a school where reading exists, then the principal can then implement guided reading, professional learning at their campus, and lean into the process that's aligned at the district level. So what Kevin's department has done is he works with the area superintendents to go through all the plans to make sure they're connected. And when there is a lack of alignment, we send, he sends feedback out to the area superintendents who share them with the principals where the adjustments need to be made.
And I appreciate that. And I can tell you, just from reading through all this, each year, y'all get better in aligning that. And it makes a difference because it's, it's hard. We set these with Dr. Cavassos overarching goals. It's what we judge on as a 30,000-foot level, but how do we align them going all the way down? So I commend y'all getting better. I'm probably getting a little into the weeds outside of governance into that world, but it's just aligning back up to our top level to make sure those fit. And I really appreciate that. So thank you for answering and just sparking my interest on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Mr. Hibbs?
Thank you, President Rice. Dr. Wertz, thank you very much for your presentation. Good presentation. Appreciate that. And I really appreciate the principals that came out and allowed your work to be shown. I mean, on each one of your campuses, it's a testament to the good work that you're doing that individuals can look at these and say, hey, you know, they stand out. And it's important to have those drivers. A few weeks ago, when the first accountability ratings came out, I was a little bit critical. And, you know, it's not my necessary nature to be as much. When I look at the scorecard, I've got to tell you that I'm very, very impressed by the fact that I wish that this could be in the community where people can see our scorecard and really understand that the A I S D, starting with you, the principals, it's not a complacent district. It's a district that's saying that, hey, we recognize when we have challenges. We move to improve and to continually better ourselves. When I look at the things, and, you know, that's a huge goal of saying all campuses will receive a met standard rating. That is something that I, I'm very thankful for, that the district has said, hey, we're going to go out and it's going to be our goal, that every campus will meet standard. But when I look over at college readiness, you know, taking a student, the percentage of students graduating from 73 percent to 80, that's huge. Because that's not one of those things that you do overnight. These are things, measurements that we've been working on. I've seen these gradually grow each and every year. But now we're talking about a seven, a seven percent jump. That's a huge, huge undertaking. And so that means that we're, we're out there and we're challenging. And to take individuals from 47 percent to 51 percent in dual-credit, these programs have been around for a long time. So this, this is telling me that the work that's being done at the high schools, and we've got three high school principals here that, that are having their counselors prod and encourage these students to be able to continue to better themselves. That's, those are big measurements. And even in workforce readiness, I, man, what we've got with our CTE center and the abilities that, and new opportunities that that's offering is just, you know, we've said it a million times already that it's game changers. You know, the thing that, the leadership, citizenship, and responsibility, I hate the fact that we have to, that surveys are our measurement on that. Because, you know, one bad thing that happens at one particular campus could be, could be a blight either on the, on the district or even just that one campus. And we know that our district is better than, you know, one misfortunate happening that may ever take place. So, you know, I, I think there's great benefit in getting information back through surveys. And we obviously want to make sure that our employees and our parents, that their feedback is saying, hey, yeah, you're indeed doing the things for our... I want to encourage the principals, just continue doing what you're doing and making that investment in these children. And that in itself will show. But once again, as it relates to everything right here on the scorecard, I want to tell you that I am so impressed because if the public sees this, they'll see that the, that our district is, is trying to get out in front and lead, and it's not complacent in any way. So I appreciate the work that you are doing under your leadership and at each campus level.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Mrs. Mays? I think what it is, when I acknowledge, you don't have to touch anything. It'll come live. So I think that's what's happening here, but you don't have to.
You drive it. Thank you. Dr. Wertz, thank you very much for your presentation. Principals, thank y'all very much for being here at 9:15. So we'll try to make this quick so y'all can go home and get some rest before the morning. My question is, all the information that's here, that's your specialty, how you do it on your campus, that's y'all's specialty. And I'm going to leave y'all to that because we've entrusted y'all to do that. So thank y'all for the job that you're doing. My question would be along the line of alignment. When I look at our scorecard under Leadership, Citizenship, and Responsibility, I'm noticing for two, Atherton and for Amos, their objectives deal with behavior.
That's correct.
So I guess my question is, when we're talking about alignment, where are we fitting that into what's on our district?
Right, so the scorecard does not highlight every aspect of the D I P. If you were to go into the District Improvement Plan, you'd see that there's a performance objective that's specifically connected to the D A E P rates. And so the goals that you see or the strategies that you see in the campus improvement plans that are connected to that area are aligned back to the District Improvement Plan. We don't have them included in the scorecard because it wasn't one of the high markers that we were trying to place on the scorecard, but it's aligned to the District Improvement Plan. that we were trying to place on the scorecard, but it, it's aligned to the district improvement plan.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Ms. Mays. Ms. Walton?
Thank you, Dr. Rice. I just wanna follow up on, uh, what Ms. May said and, uh, say that even though it's not about scores or anything like that, I'm so glad to see campus, um, and leadership taking on discipline and behavior, uh, the challenges there, and precisely designing strategies to address improvement, uh, there, because it's key. Uh, if, if there's not discipline, there's not gonna be learning, and, uh, it, it's important. So, uh, my hat's off to, to those that are trying to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. So, um, I have just a couple of questions, and really more clarifiers, and, uh, I'm also letting our, our board know that this is an action item, so I would accept a motion, uh, at any time. Before I would acknowledge that, I, I have, uh, one question. I noticed on last year's scorecard, uh, there was the, uh, the, the percent of graduates completing, uh, six semester credit hours for APIB, uh, dual credit, uh, that it would increase from 47 to 49. It, it stayed flat at 47. What was the rationale of dropping that off and that it wasn't as high a bar this year? To consider for the scorecard?
So last year, I don't have last years in front of me, um, 47 to 51. Can you say your question one more time?
Oh, yeah, so la- I, I was just curious. Uh, so last year, under college readiness, the, uh, uh, first one was the percentage of graduates completing the equivalent of six semester credit hours for dual credit AP or IB will increase from 47 to 49%. And it, it stayed flat at 47. I'm not talking about that, I was just curious, uh, that as a metric, why it, it didn't raise it, or yield to be that high a bar for this district scorecard for this year?
Well, this year, it's listed as going from 47 to 51.
Oh, did I miss it? I have it as a new. Okay. Apologize. Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry about that. Okay. So, uh, the only other question which you can probably expect from me is on the, uh, the, uh, survey results, the increases, uh, 3.09 to 3.16, 3.38 to 4.5, 3.37 to 3.44. What was the determination to make those particular ranges? Uh, is, is that a stretch? Is it statistically valid? I don't know if that would be you.
Yeah, so, uh, I, when we move or select ranges, first of all, I wanna say we honed in on the mean. And if you remember during the presentation that Dr. Barlow and the team shared around Gibson, there's the sum of all those data sets, and then there's an, a mean. And so we decided to go with the mean, because it represents the implications of all these different parts, which kinda gets to one of the other questions earlier about, um, I think you mentioned it, Mr. Hibbs, about one anomaly, um, creating a, a problem. So what we tried to do is think about is like, what is a statistically reasonable or sound goal? That if you actually pulled the levers that they shared with you, um, in the last presentation, like, for example, the ones that are connected to leadership, or, or the ones that, um, that we know that will increase student engagement, if we actually pull those levers, um, what is a reasonable, statistically sound goal that we could possibly meet? And that's how we kind of land on those, um, those targets.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you very much. And I also, I just wanna note that, uh, I appreciate the, uh, the instructions to, to go online, uh, so that we have the opportunity to, to look at all of the, uh, campus improvement plans and, and district improvement plan. And, uh, I don't know about the rest of my colleagues, but I'm anxious to do that over the week of Thanksgiving. Uh, Ms. Walton?
Uh, Dr. Rice, uh, I move that the board approve the campus improvement plan, performance objectives and the district scorecard.
Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. So we have a motion by Mrs., Ms. Walton, a second by Mrs. Mays to approve as presented the campus performance objectives and district scorecard for the 1819 year. Seeing no further lights, uh, for just additional discussion, please vote. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on next is our discussion action portion of the agenda, uh, to consider the 2019-2020 school calendar. Thank you, principals, have a great evening and a great Thanksgiving.
Have a good Friday.
Thank you, President Rice. This evening, we bring for your consideration the 1920, uh, school calendar, as well as the framework that we would like to use for the 2021 calendar, uh, as we discussed previously. I do wanna thank, uh, Mr. Hill and his calendar committee for their work over these last months, uh, in this process. They actually carried over from last year and worked at the end of the last year and the beginning of this year, and they continue to meet. So I wanna thank them. Also wanna thank, uh, Dr. Barlow's office and the communications office for partnering with Gibson, so that the survey, uh, could be put out there, put out there, uh, efficiently, and, and then the results captured very well, uh, for, for their efforts. And then, of course, to the hundreds and hundreds of teachers and campus staff and district staff that participated in the survey and parents as well. So with that, uh, Mr. Hill has a presentation for our recommendations.
So, good evening again, and we'll get right into it as we started the last presentation. I do wanna take some opportunities to, uh, thank the calendar committee. You see the parents, the staff, the teachers and the teacher organizations that are represented there. Again, we started on this work, uh, back in December of 2017, almost a year ago. And you can see the meetings that we've had to go through this process up to as recent as Monday of this week, uh, to review with the committee and, and, and get to where we are tonight. Uh, this is not new, we've already talked about this, so we'll spend a lot of time here. Uh, 75,600 minutes required, enough minutes required in the calendar for two makeup days, uh, or, uh, the equivalent minutes. And then there's just some other laws through House Bill 2610 and the education code. Uh, all of this is just a review, so we won't spend a lot of time there. The last meeting, we did talk that this calendar would go out, uh, the options would go out. And so those are three options that were created, uh, looking at exchange days in June, more planning, uh, time for teachers and staff, and, uh, maximizes the use of current operational minutes, ending the instructional days in May, and early release days for planning, uh, and for exams. Uh, we've, this, uh, information was reviewed by administration, again, the teacher focus groups at all levels, and then the actual survey went out. Uh, as Dr. Kavasos mentioned, Dr. Barlow, uh, coordinated with Gibson Consulting Group to take us through this survey. The survey opened on November 6th, and the survey closed on November 11th. Uh, again, three options were presented. Uh, approximately 40,000 emails to staff and, and parents were sent out. An additional 400 links were sent to those who, for some reason, did not receive the initial email, but contacted, uh, Gibson, and then that was, uh, communicated, uh, to them. Communications office worked to send out text messages, emails, social medias, and it was placed on the district website, as well as the campus websites, to, uh, take advantage of this survey. The respondent, uh, the total numbers, as you can see there, 43% of the total respondents was parents, 43% of the total respondents, uh, were employees, and then another 15% were in that, uh, area of employee and parent. And that made up the, uh, the final there. And so the results, uh, you'll see there, uh, calendar option A came in overall with 18% of the votes. Calendar, calendar option B came in with 59.3%, and calendar option C came in with 22.5% of the, uh, respondent votes. When you look at the responses by, uh, groups, the first group is, uh, AISD parents, and you can see how they, uh, responded to it. The second group, there was AISD employees, and the third group was the ones that were parents slash employee. And you can see option B was the, uh, was the preferred option in all, all, uh, groups. Again, uh, B emerged, uh, 65% of the votes among parents, 58.6% of the votes among employees, and 56 amongst those that, that has identified as both. It was interesting that Gibson, uh, said in their summary that, uh, they can be 99% confident that calendar B would have been the preferred calendar, and each respondent group had all individuals in the population responded. So they kind of extrapolated that forward and made that statement. So based on the results from the, uh, survey and the recommendation from the calendar committee, admini- administration recommends that you approve, uh, calendar B, option B for the 2019-2020 school year. And we also recommend that you approve this framework to, uh, build a 2020-21 calendar. Option B, just a little bit more detail, start school on Monday, August 19th, extends the school day at the secondary level by 10 minutes, takes advantage of those operational minutes that's already there for the elementary level, provides seven days, uh, prior to the school starting for planning and staff development. That's two additional days more than what we already have. Those seven days would be split three and a half for district slash campus PD days, and three and a half of those days for teacher workdays. Uh, it provides an additional two days to take advantage of time that many teachers are already in their classroom working. So we just said, how could we just add those days into, uh, uh, or give teachers credit for those days already? Calendar B also provides exchange days at the end of the year, uh, so that students and staff may end in May. Uh, it includes two teacher days, one in October and one in April, for planning and staff development. And we've got a tentative placement for there, but we had a meeting today with professional learning, and so we think those days are pretty solid. Uh, what will these days be used for? Uh, Dr. Wertz just gave you a, a detailed, uh, presentation on the campus improvement plan, and so we're looking to, to say that the work on those days would be driven by whatever the campuses have identified in the campus improvement plan for those days in, uh, October and April. And then PLCs and data review. Uh, the exchange days for the staff, again, have been moved to, uh, the end of the year, so that staff and students can end up in May. And so with that, uh, it's been a long process, but I think we're at a good point, and we'll be able to, happy to entertain any questions about the recommendation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hill. I appreciate the information, all the work, and, uh, that's a significant amount of, uh, opportunity, uh, provided for, uh, community input and internal, I guess, internal, external stakeholder input. Appreciate it. Uh, we do have some questions. Ms. Walton?
Thank you, President Rice. Uh, and, uh, Mr. Hill, please thank your committee. I know that the, they've spent the time and energy on this and, uh, have come through, and that's wonderful. Uh, I, I'm very glad to see printed in the back here that, uh, of those seven ex- the seven days at the beginning of the school year, that three and a half will be for campus, uh, professional development, and three and a half days will be teacher workdays. Uh, that's the intent of this board. Uh, I hope that, um, all of our administrators will, uh, agree that that's important for those days to be used in that way. Uh, my one, uh, only other question is to do with our hourly, um, workers, our cafeteria workers, our tr- people that work in transportation, who have had, you know, now that we don't have as many days, what happens to their pay and to their hours and that sort of thing to make, you know, keep them whole?
So that's a good question, and the committee actually had those discussions as well. And so those same days that the teachers are in PD, we bring bus drivers in for professional development trainings, uh, bus driver safety, they actually go through PBIS training as well. Uh, when we ended school early, two days this past year, we did that same thing. We brought bus drivers in to, to do that. So we anticipate, uh, professional learning for them as well. I've talked with Ms. Powell and how we could address those issues with food service, and, and there are some similar, uh, opportunities there as well.
Okay, so what I hear you saying then is that, that they will have the same opportunity and same hours and, uh, pay and so forth as they would have if we had not changed the, um, the number of days. Is that correct?
We would make every opportunity to keep them whole.
Okay.
Yes.
Please do.
That, that was, uh, a lot of discussions around that at, at, with the calendar committee.
Yeah, those are some of our lowest paid people, and, you know, I hate to see them squeezed.
Right.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Rice. Uh, Mr. Hill, I just wanna, again, commend you for the hard work that your committee's put in. This has been a long process, it goes all the way back, really, to the first and second semesters of the last school year. And I also want to point out just how, um, you have approached this entire process with the, the goal of, of soliciting feedback and then responding to it. And so we have heard from many, many people over the last few weeks who have very strong opinions about how the calendar should look. And sometimes those opinions are even internally contradictory. You know, people who want to have, say, for example, Mansfield, uh, Mansfield's calendar, but without the hours of the school day that Mansfield spends, uh, on campus. And I just wanted to point out a few ways that, that you've done that, so everybody understands that, the, the hard work that went into this and the, um, care with which you responded to that feedback. So when we, there was actually a survey before this one, correct? Last year, and one of the findings from that is that, that teachers did want more time in their classrooms without students. And so both options A and B were a response, direct response, in my opinion, to that, to that feedback. And then even since this initial proposal came to us, we have received more feedback, uh, in particular, the discuss- the slide that you just presented that showed three and a half days of staff development and three and a half days of teacher workdays, and then the commitment that was just made, that the teacher workdays will be teacher workdays. And so while there is no perfect calendar, going back to the, the comment that was made earlier, I think that we have gone a long way, and your committee has gone a long way towards proposing something that is not going to be perfect for everyone, but goes a long way towards that point. And so, again, commend you and your staff and the committee for doing that hard work. And I'd like to move that the board adopt option B as presented, um, with the further direction that option B be the guideline by which, uh, the calendar for the following academic year is also set.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. So there's a motion to approve, uh, the, uh, 1920 school calendar, option B as, as presented with the consideration of the same guideline, uh, moving forward in the future calendar year. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Mays. We have a motion and a second. Is there additional discussion? All right, before we vote, uh, I just want to point out, uh, to Mr. Chapa's point, uh, if, if you do just a quick math on employees only, uh, there is almost a 25% response rate, which is phenomenal. Nobody gets 25% response rate, so very active and very participatory. Yeah, so, uh, I just wanted to make that, that note, uh, for the record. It is, it's terrific work. Please vote. All right, we have a calendar. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hill, once again. All right, moving on, we're next on our item, uh, agenda items this evening is the, uh, uh, any items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda? Are there any items trustees wish to withdraw and consider separately? Seeing none, then we will be considering the items listed on the consent, uh, agenda. Ms. Powell, can you share some bids?
President Rice, board members, Dr. Kavasos, good evening. Uh, we have one bid on the agenda this evening for your consideration, and we are recommending the lowest bid, the bid that represents the best value to the district.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda? Mr. Hibbs?
Dr. Rice, I, uh, move that we accept the, um, consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second? A, a second, you mean? Thank you. We have, uh, motion made by Mr. Hibbs and an enthusiastic second by Mr. Hogg. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously for consent. Thank you. All right. Uh, next, uh, we have the open forum for non-agenda items, but there are no cards. Uh, so we will move to the superintendent's report. Dr. Kavasos?
Thank you, President Rice. I'd like to share, uh, information about, uh, what's happening in the district. First, Cookin Education Center had a wonderful 80th birthday celebration, uh, earlier this month. Uh, former Cookin teachers, students, uh, et cetera, came to celebrate this wonderful, uh, school and history. Many students were on, on hand. Dr. Spence did an outstanding job with her staff. Uh, these students are up there singing a song about ready, responsible and respectful, and just outstanding work at Cookin, 80 years, uh, for celebration there. So congratulations to all of them. We had many schools celebrating Veterans Day this week. And last week, Wimbush Elementary had breakfast and nice
had breakfast and nice letters from students for veterans. Piercy had a breakfast as well. Little and Key Elementarys and Lamar High School each had programs with student performances. Uh, it was very obvious that our students were inspired and, and what they learned from our veterans and our history. So thank you all, our campuses, for their veteran celebration. Earlier this week, representatives from Chase Bank presented our finance department, uh, a check for ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-three dollars, just to be exact. Uh, district partnered with Chase to pay vendors electronically and earn rebates. Uh, our executive director there, Tony Drolinger, leading the effort and, uh, accepting that, uh, donation. Uh, and so thank you, Tony, and staff for all of that work, uh, and congratulations. Where, he's, he's gone. That's right. Well, Cindy will help find Tony. Okay. So on Tuesday morning, I, I had the opportunity to speak to, uh, several hundred future teachers from region ten and eleven. These are students, seniors who want to be teachers. And the UTA hosted a forum for them or a convening. Uh, we had students from our district as well. And so I was able to be the keynote speaker for them. And what an inspiring group of people, young people who want to be classroom teachers. Uh, they shared their story and their reason and their why, and it was very inspiring. So congratulations to all of them. Of course, I shared with them exactly how they could apply to AISD while I was up there. Yeah, I took the opportunity. It was, uh, many, many students there. So Tuesday night was opportunity AISD, a chance for our students and parents to see all the wonderful things happening in AISD. Uh, we had a lot of, of fun interaction for our student, uh, and, and, uh, a great attendance there as well. This week, we had the chance to recognize our November Teachers and Department Employee of the Month. Congratulations to Jennifer Nguyen, uh, from Arlington High School, who probably got most of the Facebook traffic, uh, in, in that, uh, in that celebration. Adeseli Lopez, Lopez from Alsley, Gabriela Ayala from Anderson, and Dr. Natalie Lopez from Academic Services. Congratulations, uh, to these wonderful, uh, representatives of, of our employee group. Finally, we're sending well wishes and congratulate, congratulations to Bowie High School Wind Symphony as they head out to Seattle, Washington. Uh, Bowie Band was, uh, selected to be represented in the fortieth Western, annual Western International Band Clinic to perform. Uh, these students were very talented, uh, led by Mr. Solis there. Uh, they had a, a pep rally for the band as a celebration at Bowie High School, and they are simply outstanding. And I shared with the group, uh, entire Bowie's, uh, students, uh, and specifically the band, that we're so proud of the fact that they're leading the effort. Uh, they're first. This is the first band to be selected, uh, to this national honor. And, uh, they're leading the effort and representing AISD. Only four bands across the country were selected. Bowie High School was one of those four. And so Mr. Solis and, and his team and the students and all of Bowie's staff, congratulations. And, uh, and as I shared with them, we're very proud of them, and, and they'll represent us very well. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Boy, that's fantastic. Uh, wish, uh, I knew that before Principal Lizardo left. Uh, fantastic. Are there any, uh, school board members, uh, with reports? Ms. Mays? Are you sure?
Bring my own microphone next time. Bring my own microphone. Thank you, President Rush. Um, just a couple of things, um, I'd like, I would like to point out. Um, Bowie High School is just now in their second year that they've had FFA on their campus. And this year, we had, uh, Grace Barber actually placed first in the PR in advanced area. And this is actually the first time in history that anyone has advanced in that area from Bowie High School. So, uh, congratulations to Grace Barber. Um, also just want to remind everybody this weekend, the temperatures are going to be really great for football. Um, we have a few teams that have advanced to the playoffs, and they will be playing, uh, this weekend. So just want to say thank you to, um, the coaches for their hard work for this entire season. We understand that it takes a lot of time away from their families. So would like to just thank all of the coaches. Um, congratulations to Arlington High for having no losses this season so far. Just want to point that out and Coach Peach. Um, so please go out and support our football teams this, uh, weekend. Um, and then finally, I would just like to say congratulations to our own Tracy Brown for being, uh, our area superintendent, for being selected by the Arlington Alumni Chapter for Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated as the educational, with an educational developmental award. And she will be recognized for that on December the first at the Arlington Museum of Arts. Congratulations. It is awesome to know that not only do we recognize our staff's great work, but they have an opportunity to be recognized in the community. So thank you very much, Ms. Brown. Happy Thanksgiving.
That is fantastic. Congratulations. That's very nice. All right. I don't see any other lights for other members. I, I, I would like to publicly thank, uh, this board for your dedication and work. Uh, we did have our, uh, Team of Eight training, uh, Monday night as well. It was a very good session. Uh, I think we, we, uh, we grew, and, uh, I just appreciate your dedication and, and participation as we all move collectively forward with, uh, focusing on our student achievement here. So with that said, Madam Secretary, are there any items to consider? You can do it without the mic.
No questions nearby.
All right. Very good. So it is nine forty-one, and we will now move to a closed meeting pursuant to sections five-five-one point oh-seven-two through five-five-one point zero-eight-four of the Texas Government Code. Thank you.